...Sir Farr and our city manager, who's also a veteran, to lead us in the pledge. And I was going to ask you guys to step down there and stand there together.
I wanted to make a couple of comments first.
You want to make some comments first?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, I am a naturalized citizen of the United States. I'm very proud to honor the flag of the United States. But I'd like to dedicate my portion of this to my father-in-law, eighty-five years old, who fought on Okinawa during World War II. And I'm very, very proud of you, Dad. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that my service was in the Air Force Academy, and I met many officers and veterans, and also a lot of POWs. And I just wanted to thank all the veterans and all those currently serving for their service to the United States. And it's not just this war that's going on now, but all the wars that have preceded it, all the way back to World War II. So, thanks.
So it seems appropriate, if we have any veterans in the room, could you stand up so that we can honor you? Any? We're veteran-less, except for those we brought with us. Okay, so will you two go down there with John and stand up and lead us in the pledge, please?
Why can't we use the flag of the United States of America? And do we bother for which it stands? Our nation, our God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person has three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, your city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward, if known. The time run lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have fifteen seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. We have twenty-four people signed up to speak tonight. So I'm going to open the forum, and first up is Stan Taylor, followed by Charlie Swanson.
My name's Stan Taylor. I live at twelve-eighty-five McLean Boulevard. And I'm here tonight as a representative of We the People Eugene to deliver a resolution for your consideration on the impact of corporate money on democracy. We the People Eugene was formed in the wake of Citizens United Supreme Court decision in two thousand and ten, which held that corporations, as a form of corporate free speech, protected by the First Amendment, could spend unlimited amounts of money from their general treasuries to influence elections. The mission of We the People Eugene is to create democracy by building social movements dedicating to ending the excessive influence of corporations and other moneyed interests over our political and economic system, and to build people-based democratic communities founded on the natural rights of human beings and the environment. To achieve this goal, we became a local affiliate of the National Move to Amend campaign. We've held numerous, very successful educational events concerned with the impact of corporate money on democracy, and we have collected over five thousand signatures on a resolution to present to you the city of Eugene for adoption. The heart of the resolution reads, "The city of Eugene calls for reclaiming democracy from the corrupting effects of the undue influence of corporate money by amending the U.S. Constitution to establish that, one, corporations are not entitled to constitutional rights granted to persons, and, two, therefore regulating corporate political contributions and spending is not equivalent to limiting political speech." Now let me be clear what this resolution is not. It is not an attack on the corporate form of doing business. Rather, it is a recognition that corporations are not persons entitled to constitutional rights. When corporations are held to be persons under the Constitution, what is occurring is an attack on the sovereignty of democratically-elected governments like yourself to regulate destructive corporate behavior. And nowhere is this clearer than where corporate money is mixed with elections. So tonight, We the People is delivering our resolution and the petitions signed by the five thousand people for you to take up as a council, with the high expectation that you will consider and pass the resolution at a council meeting in the near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No, we just don't applaud in here because we wanted to be a safe place for everybody, and so please just honor that. Thank you. Charlie Swanson's next, followed by Eugene Wanderer.
Charlie Swanson, and I'm from Councilor Zelenka's ward. I'm also with We the People Eugene. Abolishing corporate personhood is an issue that has wide support. As Stan mentioned, we have gathered over five thousand signatures on our petition, and I would like our chief petitioner to deliver those. So to whom should they be delivered? Okay.
City manager.
Thank you very much. Abolishing corporate personhood is one of the few issues on which both grassroots Tea Party members and those in Occupy Eugene tend to agree. People across the country woke up to the issue of corporate personhood when the Supreme Court made its Citizens United decision. Polls found that about eighty percent of Americans opposed the Citizens United decision, including about seventy-five percent of Republicans. An even larger, eighty-seven percent of Americans think big companies have too much influence in Washington. Many, including the more than five thousand that have signed our petition, feel that a good way to help correct the excess of corporate power is with a constitutional amendment that abolishes corporate personhood. Other communities have also begun calling for an amendment. Voters in Missoula, Boulder, Madison, and Lincoln, Vermont have all passed resolutions calling on Congress to pass an amendment to abolish corporate personhood. In all of these cities, at least seventy-four percent of the voters approved such resolutions. A number of city councils have also passed resolutions calling for an amendment, including South Miami in Florida, Leverett and Yarmouth in Massachusetts, Port Bragg, Richmond, Marina, and Berkeley in California. Just recently, Portland Mayor Sam Adams has promised to bring such a resolution to the Portland City Council, and in Los Angeles, a similar resolution has been introduced. Quite a few communities have also passed ordinances which, at least in part, declare that the notion of corporate personhood, or that corporations have constitutional rights, is invalid in their communities. When we are gathering signatures on petition, many Eugene citizens will thank us for doing so. Others have not yet learned what corporate personhood mean. They are often incredulous when they learn that our Supreme Court has decided, in a variety of cases, that corporations should have the same rights that are recognized as inherent in people. To many people, corporate personhood is such a bizarre concept that it would be funny if it were not so harmful to our democratic process. Justice John Paul Stevens, a Gerald Ford appointee, wrote in his dissent to the Citizens United decision, "Although they make enormous contributions to our society, corporations are not actually members of it. They cannot vote or run for office. Because they may be managed and controlled by non-residents, their interests may conflict in fundamental respects with the interests of eligible voters. The financial resources, legal structure, and instrumental orientation of corporations raise legitimate concerns about the role in the electoral process." Our lawmakers have a compelling constitutional basis.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Eugene Wanderer is next, followed by, it looks like, Chris Califf.
First of all, let me apologize. I'm not a very eloquent public speaker, so bear with me while I stumble around up here like a drunken fool. Since the beginning of the Occupy movement, I've heard there's been a lot of argument for, against. I think a lot of what's being failed to be recognized here is that every one of us, not just those involved in the occupation, not just those who write about it, those that are actually at the sites, every one of us are part of the ninety-nine percent. When I read the papers and I see statements by, you know, council members negative towards the Occupy movement, Mr. Farr, or I look online and I see people whose family members have started petitions to end it, Mr. Clark, it really brings me down for the simple fact that you guys are both on our side. Republican, Democrat, Libertarian, it doesn't matter. We are all fighting for the same thing here. By fighting against this, what you're doing is you're agreeing to sell your children, your grandchildren, and their children to corporate interests. The same corporate interests that have bought and paid for our politicians by the time they reached the White House. I would like to ask that we maybe come together on this and work together, whether Republican, Democrat, Libertarian, as I said, work together to come up with a resolution to this, much along the lines of what these two gentlemen before me have said. Thank you.
Next is Chris Califf, followed by Anya Dobrovsky.
Hello. Thanks for having me here. My name is Chris. I live at eight-sixty-five East Thirty-Second. I'm a member of the Occupy Eugene organization. I'll be addressing my comments tonight to Councilor Farr, as a matter of fact. I'd like to say first, Councilor Farr, I know your son, Pat, quite well, and I consider him a friend, and I know, as far as I know, he likes you, and therefore I assume you're probably good people, so please don't take anything I have to say personally. But I must take issue with your opposition to Occupy Eugene, in particular with the number of points you made in your forum article occupying the Greenway last week. First, on the Greenway issue, I understand we have an issue that the camp, the park we're in is technically part of the Greenway in Eugene. I would like to say, though, that whatever the legal classification in Washington-Jefferson Park between Sixth and Seventh Avenues has no relation whatsoever to any logical definition of Greenway. Greenway is supposed to mean riparian habitat. The Riverfront Research Park, for example, would clearly fit into a sensible definition of Greenway. However, a square block of lawn nine or ten blocks from the river, separated by Sixth Avenue, Fifth Avenue, a major railway excavation in First Avenue is about as far from riparian habitat as you can get. It would be unfortunate if a law student sues over any supposed Greenway violations caused by Occupy Eugene, but in any rational view, that concern must pale in comparison to the critical issues that the Occupy movement is bringing to public view through encampments such as this one. Second, the costs of the city that are attributed to us in your letter demand a more thorough accounting. For instance, physical damage to the park has been assessed at ten thousand dollars. I would very much like to see a breakdown of how this number was reached. We have shown each time we've moved that we are serious about doing everything within our power to restore the area we vacated to at least the condition it was in when we arrived. And as I just discussed, the Greenway in question consists primarily of lawn. I don't know where you buy your grass seed, but I have a hard time believing that it's going to cost ten thousand dollars to reseed one square city block. I can assure you, we will provide all necessary labor with which to spread grass seed, erect fencing and signs, and do whatever else is necessary to restore the park to its original condition. Third, the cost of police and other undisclosed services to us was listed as an expense of thirty thousand dollars. These figures may or may not be accurate. I have no way of knowing, but I would respectfully remind the counselor that we do not ask for and do not in any way desire or require this detention from the city. I understand that the police will do whatever they consider necessary to ensure public safety, but I object to this cost being attributed to us. We would like to solve the problem of extra city labor costs by simply asking the city to stop worrying about us and instead go ahead and spend that money on the more pressing societal problems like homelessness and hunger that you so eloquently lay out in your article. Finally, Councilor Farr, speaking of these other societal issues, I find it disingenuous and hypocritical for you to even mention the fact that a single dollar could provide six pounds of food for a hungry person, or the fact that there are homeless kids waking up in the morning and going to school. You bring up these homeless kids, and in the same breath that you deny them the right to even have some which is a tent in the park to call their own. We are providing a relatively safe place to live, food, and a legal place to go to the bathroom, all funded by donations from the public, when it should be the job of the city to provide these services. We all know that if Occupy Eugene were not in Washington-Jefferson Park, the theoretical forty thousand dollars we're costing the city would not be spent on food or shelter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nope. Thank you for that. Anya Dobrovsky is next, followed by Judy Horseman.
Good evening. My name's Anya Dobrovsky. I live in Ward Three, Allen-Zelenka's ward. I'm a recent graduate from the U of O with a master's in landscape architecture, and now I'm working for Planning Public Policy and Management at the U of O. And I am also a member of the city of Eugene's Bike-Ped Advisory Committee, although today I am speaking as an individual. I would like to encourage the city council to accept the Bike-Ped Master Plan and have it move forward into the Transportation System Plan. I hope that you, like me, view the Ped-Bike Master Plan as a critical piece of not only the TSP, but also of the many other documents that will be guiding the future growth and development of the Eugene metro area. Members of the B-PAC recognize how integral transportation issues are to creating an economically vibrant, environmentally robust, and socially equitable city, a healthy, safe, sustainable place for us to share. As I reviewed the master plan, it reminded me that transportation is a unifying element in our effort towards a truly sustainable city. The benefits of excellent active transportation facilities tie into the goals of Eugene's Climate and Energy Action Plan, the Envision Eugene process, and twenty-minute neighborhoods, among others, as Reed spoke about earlier this evening. We also cross over with the goals of the Sustainability Commission. Because transportation issues transcend divisions in the physical, economic, and social environments, I push you to see the solutions to these challenges as interdisciplinary in nature, meaning that our transportation planners are not just working with one another, but they're also working with land use planners and people who do building code. And I hope that you will encourage, sorry, and I hope you will encourage our city staff to continue working collaboratively between departments as we move towards a greener future. I'd also like to extend an invitation to all of our city council members, and really to everybody here tonight. Please attend a B-PAC meeting so you can see what we're working on and how it fits into the larger context of your work. We meet the second Thursday of each month at five-thirty P.M. in the atrium building. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Judy Horseman is next, followed by David Guzzara.
So my name is Judy Horseman. I live at eighteen-thirty-five East Twenty-Eighth Avenue in Eugene, and I'm in Ward Three. I'm a member of the B-PAC, and I was also, I served on the PAC for the pedestrian and bicycle master plan. I'm speaking on my own behalf in support of the plan, and as you heard earlier tonight, it's an ambitious plan that sets a goal of doubling the percentage of walking and biking over the next twenty years by creating a safe, connected, convenient, and accessible bicycle and pedestrian network throughout the city. I think increasing infrastructure and programs that promote walking and biking is critical to making it possible for citizens to have the choice to choose lifestyles that rely on active transportation. You've heard about some, or a lot, in detail of what's in the plan, so I won't go over that, but I'm excited about the bicycle boulevards, which I think will attract families and people who are uncomfortable biking on busy streets. And all of the sidewalk projects and accessways will make it easier for pedestrians and transit users to get where they need to go. City staff does an excellent job of procuring funding to build and maintain bicycle facilities, but it is often difficult to find money to do sidewalk infill and maintenance, as you well know, especially if the funds are restricted curb-to-curb. I encourage you, as you read this master plan, to think about how to modify current funding sources under city control, and perhaps create new funding sources to address the critical need for sidewalk infill and maintenance. And I urge you to accept the plan in the months to come. And finally, as you heard, Councilors Ortiz and Zelenka did join in bicycle rides in their wards to look at problem areas and proposed projects. And I hope that it helped them understand the bicycle system better. We appreciate that you joined us, and I know that it provided an informative dialogue for all the participants. And I invite others of you on the council to please join us for a walk or a bicycle ride in your ward this coming spring. Thank you.
Thank you. David Guzzara is next, followed by Zachary Vishnoff.
My name's David Guzzara, and I live in Ward Two, represented by Councilwoman Taylor. I served on the City of Eugene Pedestrian Bicycle Master Plan Advisory Committee, am a member of the advocacy committee of the Greater Eugene Area Rider Gears, and am a member of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the City of Eugene Transportation Planning Department, B-PAC. B-PAC does have six points about the issues that you were thinking of tonight to share with you. Bicycling and walking are legitimate transportation modes needing to be treated and shared as equals in Eugene's transportation funding mix. Bicycling and walking improve the personal health of Eugenians engaged in them and benefit those unable to actively engage by reducing pollution on our community through reduced automobile use. Bicycling and walking are natural partners to and catalysts for improving and increasing public transportation in Eugene. Bicycling and walking reduce wear and tear on our street systems and allow our city to spend less on upkeep of municipal streets and automobile infrastructure by reducing higher-impact, resource-intensive auto travel and parking needs. Bicycling and walking allow Eugene families greater financial freedom by reducing the financial burden of maintaining automobiles. Bicycling and walking naturally favor compact, efficient urban growth and development. Speaking as a registered nurse, I can tell you that the obvious health benefits of active transportation, biking, walking, and public transit, are huge. Enabling our community to shift from their autos to walk and bike and ride buses to work and school and stores and activities will create a healthier citizenry. A healthier population translates to happier people, better able to adapt. We know this instinctively, and research bears it out. Increasing bicycle, pedestrian, and public transit facility will give Eugenians the chance to transform from energy-wasting, polluting, outdated, increasingly unsustainable transportation modes more easily. Giving Eugenians a chance to spend less of their money on automobiles, gasoline, and car insurance will free their income and free their lives. They will have more money to spend improving the quality of their family's lives. They will be able to weather the economic and ecological changes facing us. They will be able to create an arc, if you will. Our community will be better able to ride the waves of change that we are facing. The bicycle and pedestrian master plan has much to offer us to help our town become a community that meets its present environmental, economic, and social needs without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs.
Thank you. Zachary Vishnoff is next, followed by Ali Valkyrie.
Hi, I'm Zachary Vishnoff, Ward Three. People have called it Zelenka's ward, I'd call it Phil Knight's ward. I'm totally off-subject tonight because I was going to talk to you about these police hearings, which are very important. I'm still going to be following up with you about that, but then I hear there's a Moss Street vacation is coming up for a hearing in a week, so I was going to invite the city manager to explain to the public, what's the Moss Street vacation hearing, and this is for U of O parking? Are you going to transfer some land? What's the price on the parking spaces? You know, the stuff the media should have been digging out, but you know how they are. I think if Moss Street is being vacated, I want to know when the hearing is, and I want it told to the whole town tonight, because I know it's been an issue, and I know I've worked on the issue for approximately a decade, so I'd like at least some explanation of what's going on and when the hearing is and where it is, if possible. That's if possible. This bike committee thing is really a problem, you know? It really is. Potholes do not take a tire bike committee to fill, okay? The bike cycle track, I'm watching cars drive down it. There's been driving down there all evening, the wrong way. If this bike committee was at all serious about any of its plans, I think they would have a hearing on the projects they've endorsed lately and whether they were successful outcomes, because I see all sorts of really disastrous bike planning taking place. And I would call it bike pork. Kind of, it started with the Defazio Bike Bridge, you know? It was kind of necessary, but sort of not, and then ever since, it's gone down this nasty road of really junk planning. My understanding is you're pushing the bike committee to go look at the E-Web property now. Well, the E-Web property doesn't need roads, or Priuses, or new bike lanes, or new roads at the river. The E-Web property needs mitigation of toxic waste at the site. It needs historic preservation. It needs study, and it needs public hearings about whether the public wants a bunch of rich people living at E-Web and the green condominiums the Portland architects love to build. I would just say, end the bike pork, and fill the potholes, and really get serious about what the, the ground truth of what these bike lanes you're putting in are incredibly dangerous, especially on Alder Street. Thank you.
Next is Ali Valkyrie, followed by Randy Prince.
Hi there. My name is Ali Valkyrie, Ward One, Councilor Brown. I'm not sure who said it first, but it said that society is measured by how it treats its most vulnerable citizens. I often modify this quote slightly in my head, as it is my belief that an individual community is also measured by how it treats its most vulnerable citizens. In terms of the homeless and the disenfranchised in this town, as I have said here before, we have failed as a community. I'm not here to cast blame for this failure, but to stress upon this council that a solution to this problem needs to become the top priority of city government. I know the council, as a body, has expressed concern about this issue, especially recently and within the context of the Occupy Eugene protest. But in the end, this amounts to lip service in the sense that there has been no significant change in the status quo. I strongly feel that part of the problem is that there is a stark disconnect and lack of understanding on the part of city officials as to what it is like to actually be homeless. Sergeant Fitzpatrick of the E.P.D. expressed publicly last July that he believes that many of the homeless, especially the street kids, are there by choice. As someone who has personal relationships with these kids, I stand before you to tell you that it is not a choice, and that respectfully Sergeant Fitzpatrick needs to learn the difference between a free choice and a Hobson's choice. Similarly, Councilman Farr, several times this past month, you have justified your opposition to Occupy Eugene by stating that we have camping programs that allow people to park in parking lots, which is wonderful, save for the fact that the majority of homeless do not own cars. As I've said, I'm not here to cast blame. I am here to implore you to educate yourselves as to the realities of life on the street. There's something out there called the Food Stamp Challenge, in which both families and occasionally congressmen live an entire month on food stamps. It's very educational. It teaches them the realities of poverty. I propose a similar challenge. I'm going to call it the Homeless Challenge. I challenge anyone in city government to spend a night at the Eugene Mission so you can understand what it's like to be stripped of your dignity, to be treated with a disrespect like you have never known, and to experience the wounds to your pride that come with being at a mercy of an organization that prioritizes rules over humanity, the same organization that turned Thomas Egan away on a cold night three years ago, only to have him freeze to death a block away. And after you learn for yourselves why so many refuse to stay at the Mission, I then challenge you to spend a night illegally sleeping in a city park so you can truly understand what it means to be cold, vulnerable, and unable to sleep soundly through a constant fear of being arrested, beaten, or sexually assaulted. Until and unless you undergo these experiences, I ask that the respective powers that be acknowledge that your assumptions and your judgments regarding this population are just that, assumptions and judgments. Thank you.
Next is Randy Prince, followed by Hari Bhune.
Randy Prince in the Amson neighborhood, still part of Ward Three, thank you. I was really happy to see sidewalks open up downtown. I came to make a few comments on downtown. That was nice, after so many months of seeing the sidewalks closed, and it's good to see. I hope that our downtown and central areas will become vibrant enough that we'll not have so many sidewalks closed, or recognize the expense from these many-month-long closures, which I see, and sometimes they're necessary, even in other cities, they go to great expense to keep our public sidewalks open. And speaking of sidewalks downtown, imagine yourself to be a sight-impaired person and take a walk around downtown. There are some areas where the surfaces are broken up, and so the issue of maintenance, not just infill, because we do have sidewalks, is something we should look at. You're in an urban renewal area, and I wouldn't necessarily leave the whole thing to the usual design experts, that there are some issues about how our sidewalks work. design experts that there are some issues about how our sidewalks work. A couple of years ago, I went to a city club program about, you know, how we're going to get the downtown going, some of the money that needed to be spent. There's policing, that's very expensive. There's also the physical amenities. And I asked Susan Muir at the time, what are we going to do about that lighting? She says, oh, we're going to fix that. There's going to be some, there's some new technology that can do that. But you know that low-pressure sodium? Every time I go up I-5 past Centralia, I see that converted campus. That's kind of what I think of, is prison yard lighting. That's what they made the campus into. It's punitive. There's a lot of glare, too. There's safety issues. I really feel our downtown would be much more welcoming with some of the newer alternatives in lighting, even though that stuff was selected for energy. From light, sound. I actually came here because my friend Misha says, you've got to go down there and complain. They're using music as a weapon. Well, sometimes music is used as a weapon. You remember Panama, Waco, and so on? They blasted that music. You'd call it headbanger music, you know? And it's supposed to drive well-adjusted people or functional people nuts. Well, we don't use that kind of music. We use a classical music that's favored by well-adjusted people. And sometimes the non-well-adjusted people don't like it, but it can also shape them. So I want to applaud you, whoever's responsible for playing the classical music down there. I mean, it doesn't have to be the most strident opera, but it's beautiful, and we are a great city for the arts. And we have, you know, our symphony. We have everybody that plays at Beale Hall. We also have one of the greatest radio stations in the country. Beautiful music on KWAX, and actually, you're welcome to play that all day long, so said the DJ. So I would encourage more classical music and that will shape a positive, welcoming environment downtown. And there was a complaint about not being enough variety. There was a beautiful variety of music available, and I appreciated it. And food vendor down there said people are actually stopping to listen to it.
Howard Bonnet is next, followed by Sue Walling.
Good evening, my name is Howard Bonnet. I live in 1835 East 28th, and I'm in Allen's Lankas Ward. And I passed you a copy of testimony or input on the critical side, but what I have to say tonight is a commentary, not criticism, and related to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. And to do that, I want to go back to when I came to the town in 1965, and I brought my bicycle from Madison, Wisconsin, and two things happened to me in the first week here. First thing that happened to me was I had a call from the president's office and President of University of Oregon, and they said they want to see me. And that doesn't usually happen to assistant professor-level faculty members, and that made me very nervous. And so when I went into the office, met the president, the president said, Dr. Bonnet, you haven't signed a loyalty oath. And I said, no, I haven't. I didn't see it. And he said, well, we are, our state system via education wants to file a suit, and we need people who are affected by the fact that the State of Oregon has a loyalty oath, so we would like you not to sign it. And so, but that was a relief off of my mind. The other thing that happened to me in the first week is that when I started riding my bike to the university, I couldn't find a bike rack. And I was working in Onyx Bridge, and those of you know that Onyx Bridge has an X structure, and it was built so that cars could go underneath it in case they wanted to extend Onyx Bridge. So we were still thinking about cars then. That was 1965. Nobody knew about the climate issue. Actually, carbon dioxide levels were quite low at that time. We hadn't really ramped up yet. But myself and another bike rider in the department managed to find a bike rack hidden in the shrubbery and moved it underneath Onyx Bridge and where the first two bicycles parked there. If you go there now, you'll find there are very, very many bikes. So the point is that over the nearly 50 years now, I want to say as an elder that enormous strides have been made in our active transportation efforts, and I want to commend you for the discussion you had at the work session tonight, and the fact that you had looked over the plan carefully and were concerned about projects in the plan, and urge you to accept it and ultimately to approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sue Walling is next, followed by Dennis Cassidy.
Hi, I'm Sue Walling. I live in Councilor Ortiz's Ward, and I'd like to speak about the Fed Bike Master Plan, too. First, I'd really like to thank staff for producing a really exceptional plan. It's really a very exciting look at what our future in transportation might look like. But as you realize, you know, getting the plan written is one thing, getting it built is what really counts. And it's really important, not only for people who ride bikes, but also if you want to achieve the goals of Envision Eugene or the Climate Energy Action Plan, or even if you just want to make your budget work, you really need to get the projects in this plan built. So I'd like to make a few suggestions along that line. First of all, I'd like to, I'd like you to urge staff to kind of look at the performance measures again because the most concrete performance measures in here really are to increase the number of miles of bikeways built and of sidewalks built. And that's really not very well-aligned with the goals of doubling the number of trips made by walking and biking and of making biking and walking more attractive than cars for short trips. Because many times, the most effective projects for those aims, it might only be a 50-yard connection between a neighborhood and a store, or something like that. It's not really mile, it's not the quantity of bikeways that count, it's the quality of them. We need to build things that really make people feel comfortable walking and biking in our town. And so I'd really like to see a performance measures that measure that more directly because generally speaking, you get what you measure. So if we want to get more people walking and biking, that's what we need to measure. And we may need to make some investments in better techniques of counting how many trips are made by walking and biking. I'd also like a closer look at the list of prioritization because although there is a list of priority projects, it's not very clear where those came from exactly. And if the B-PAC and Citizen General and the staff are supposed to update that every year, we really need a list of criteria about how do we assign priority to given projects so we really can spend our money most effectively. And then we come to the part about spending money. In the past, prioritizing bikeways really hasn't been that big a deal because we didn't really have any money to spend. We had to either wait till somebody gave us some money in a grant, or some road was being rebuilt anyway, and then we'd add bikeways onto it. But that really won't get us where we need to be. So I hope you will find some way to have some dedicated funding for building the projects in this plan. Because if you think about it, if you could build one roadway project that would reduce demand throughout the transportation system by 10%, wouldn't you build it? Of course you would. You can build every project in this book for the cost of one major roadway project. You really can't afford not to build this thing. So let's find a way of having dedicated funding for the Bike Ped Master Plan. Thanks.
Dennis Cassidy is next, followed by Scott Sanders.
Name is Dennis Cassidy. I live in Councilor Taylor's Ward. I'm here to talk about the Eugene Rental Housing Code. It was modeled after the housing code in Corvallis, which one person administers that program there. Eugene saw fit to hire three people to administer the program here in Eugene. Corvallis charges $8 per unit per year. Eugene wanted $12 initially. We got them down to $10. Initially, the city was placing these funds in a general fund. Fortunately, later, it went into a designated account, or otherwise, I'm sure the funds would have been long gone. For example, the police department was recently salivating when they found how much money was sitting in this account. They wanted to use the money to help police the West University neighborhood. I'm sorry, but that money is not designated, was not designated, for anybody other than the Housing, the Eugene Rental Housing Code. I have two homes that are currently under construction and have been built twice by the Rental Housing Code. I don't even have an occupancy permit or a final on these two homes yet, yet I'm being, I was billed by the Housing Code for these two properties. The accounting for this program is horrible. I've attended most of the department advisory committee meetings. One such meeting was advertised in the Register Guard, yet when I arrived, I found that there was no meeting, and research found that this was a city error and not the fault of the Register Guard. One of the DAC meetings was attended by an employee from the City Finance Department. Her figures showed much less money in the account because she wasn't carrying forward the monies from years previous. Another example of accounting discrepancies is in a complaint report published by the City Housing Code. I've just left nine copies here, and you guys can look that over. I invite the city council to try to understand these totals. They don't add up. The City Housing Code has done everything possible to get tenant participation in this program: unlimited advertising, bookmarks, mailings, newspaper ads, and flyers posted in the Urban Memorial Student Union. Initially, there was interest by the tenants, but as the years have passed, fewer and fewer have shown interest. The DAC has continued to have problems filling the seats to represent the tenants. Obviously, the need for the Rental Housing Code has diminished. A former member of the DAC who graduated from the U of O Law School last fall, or last spring, I mean, Daniel Prince, stated for the Register Guard article that the rental housing program has become a question-and-answer service and is closer to outliving its usefulness. In this day and age, it is not fiscally responsible to let this program continue, and I propose that these excess funds, about $180,000, be returned to the landlords.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Sanders is next, followed by Mark Hurwitt.
Scott Sanders, Eugene, Oregon, in Ortiz's Ward. I'm here also to talk about the Rental Housing Code. In today's economy and the budget issues that all governments are facing, state, local, and federal, don't really have the option, you know, do good at any cost. Not really an option anymore. As a city and a local government official, you have to ask what benefit the city is gaining for the cost it's imposing on its citizens. I'm here to ask you to consider this simple concept when deciding the fate of the Rental Housing Code. The program does provide an avenue for tenants to seek correction to simple structural housing problems. However, it is not unique. Rather, it's a redundant government service. There are laws in place at the state and federal levels, as well as local building codes, that already address this issue. Further, if tenants are unhappy, they can seek remedies through small claims court or simply choose not to do business with poor landlords. Since the program started five years ago, it's had a total of 150 complaints that have actually led to the city requiring or assuring that needed repairs were made. That's an average cost per complaint of $11,600. Now, obviously, it doesn't cost that much money to do that. So where does the money go? A large portion of the funds collected simply go to the collection process. Takes a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of technology to create and support a wholly separate taxing agency for this program. So when you as elected officials look at this code from a cost-benefit perspective, there's no reason to continue the program. When you consider this is a redundant service, it rarely results in enforcement, its average cost of complaint is $11,600, and a high percentage of the taxes that are collected simply go for the collection process, it simply doesn't make sense. That's why I'm asking you, our elected officials, to do the reasonable thing, do the right thing, and let the code sunset. Thank you.
Mark Hurwitt is next, followed by Misha Seymour. Mark? Do you see no Mark?
What's going on, Happy? Oh, I can't take anymore. They're piping out Nezak at Kenkesi Square. La-la-la-la-la-la, la-la-la-la, 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 la-la-la-la-la-la, la-la-la-la. I simply can't bear it. You, you gotta, you gotta be kidding. They're probably being music out of Kenkesi Square? Right near where the storyteller, the storyteller is there? The songs repeat 24/7. It's like, gives me a headache. It's like Big Brother, hear it all the time. I mean, I'd rather, I would, I'd rather, I'd rather hear a piper, like a live piper. I think my good friend Randy is wrong on this one, though it's not a contest. Eugene says it's the city, the arts, and the outdoors. We could support local musicians. It's right near Voodoo Donuts. It's one of the few places where people can play music here in town. It's like Big Brother. You have to hear the music. Why? Why? This is something to be doing all across the country, the same kind of thing, trying to get rid of people, taking benches away from the Kenkesi Square. And you know what? It's not right. This is our city. This is our public square. And it isn't right. And the people aren't going to stand for it anymore because it isn't right. We should inspire hope. A child might today, something like, for example, like someone like Happy, hey, we're around Kenkesi Square. What about, maybe somebody might get inspired to come up with stories, to have some more hope, not to move people away. We're not the enemy here, and we're not going to stand for it anymore because it isn't right. And let's listen to Happy.
Thank you, Misha.
And have a Happy Town rather than a gloomy and whatever kind of town where you have to get on drugs.
Eric Hall is next, followed by Dennis Chapa.
Good evening, my name's Eric Hall. My business is located at 116 Highway 99. I'm an architect here in the community. I've been practicing almost 20 years at this point, doing primarily work in the private sector. I'm here tonight to talk about the Eugene Rental Code housing and the government redundancy I believe that it represents. While this is a little off-topic from my profession, commonly, we deal with clients who have issues that have been raised with regard to building code violations. These are typically complaint-driven, although they also come from city staff inspection folks as well. And all of those elements usually end up as items that are directed to the city, and interestingly enough, the same city staff, for the most part, that deal with the issues associated with those building code complaints, also deal with the complaints associated with the Housing Code. Now, as you're aware already, the Housing Code deals with seven sections: structural integrity, plumbing, heating, weatherproofing, security, smoke detectors, and mold. Of those, all of those are already handled and already addressed under current building codes with the exception of one item, which is security, an important item, but all the others have been addressed. So I was taught in my architectural training that it wasn't just enough to criticize someone's design, that you needed to think in terms of how the system, the design could be made better. And I think that it's, that we do need a method to address legitimate complaints from our tenants because unfortunately, not all of our landlords are as stellar as we'd like them to be. But I would argue that there are ways to do that already without needing to hire a lawyer to do so. And that frankly, tenants could well call the city in the same fashion that other complaints are currently. They'd be talking to the same staff. There is perhaps a need for additional land use ordinance that might address the issues of security so that there would of security, so that there would be a land use component to address that issue. But at the end of the day, it seems to me that it's not just enough to do good. Government needs to do good at a good value. And having witnessed your work session, I know that many of you were supportive of the good work that was done and that is being done by the building code and more specifically the housing code. But I think that there's more that needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Dennis Chapa is next, followed by Amanda.
Hi, my name is Dennis Chapa. I reside at 99 Lorraine Highway, Ward 2. Thank you, Mayor and Councilors, for your consideration. I am speaking in opposition to the continuation of the Eugene housing code. This program attacks on landlords paid for by tenants is costing $290,000 a year, or about $11,000 to $12,000 per incident investigated. I don't see by any stretch of the imagination how this can be conceived a cost-effective program. We don't expect government to be as efficient as the competitive private sector, but even this is over the top for government. If there really didn't exist means for tenants to address habitability issues with the few landlords that don't keep up their properties, then maybe one could try to justify these costs. Building code enforcement and state landlord-tenant law already provide avenues for tenants to address issues with landlords. In other words, this program is redundant. With this program, there's a lack of transparency in government. Staff time and activities aren't being tracked, so there's no way to know if the dedicated fund is being charged appropriately. Further, you can't manage program effectiveness on things you don't measure. There's a huge potential for staff time to be unloaded, offloaded into this dedicated fund, and no way to know if this is happening or not. This lack of transparency is not much of a way to instill trust in government. Thank you.
Next, I have Amanda, followed by Julia Rains.
My name is Amanda Ellis, and I reside at 346 East 16th Avenue. And I am speaking on behalf of the Protect Our Oceans Campaign. The Oregon Student Public Interest Research Group, also known as OSBR, located at the University of Oregon and Lane Community College, has been educating the Eugene population on the detrimental effects plastic pollution, specifically, plastic grocery bags, has on marine life, human health, and coastal economies. Plastic pollution affects 267 species worldwide and kills 1 million marine animals every year. Animals mistake these plastic debris for food, causing internal injuries that are fatal. Just this summer, researchers found a 15-inch green sea turtle washed ashore in Australia that had swallowed a shocking 317 pieces of plastic. Humans are not exempt from the harmful effects of plastic pollution. Plastic debris leaches toxic chemicals into our environment, threatening our health. Because of this plastic pollution traveling freely around in our ocean ecosystem, these toxics also get into our food systems. States like Oregon rely heavily on our coastlines and our oceans. Our economy is helped a lot from the tourism that is drawn from our scenic beaches.
No. Put it away.
As our beaches become increasingly covered in plastic, we put our tourism industry at risk. Already, we're spending millions of dollars to keep our beaches clean. One of the worst things about this type of pollution is that once we create it, it's really hard to get rid of. It takes hundreds of years for it to be, to become broken up, and it never biodegrades. Second, it's rarely recycled, and even when it is, the end product is low-grade, nothing. And I repeat with the highest of emphasis, nothing we use for a few minutes should ever last on this planet for hundreds of years. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to pause for a moment here before I call the next person and say, I didn't mean to embarrass you because of you having a sign, but we actually don't, we have a policy of no big signs in here, and so you can wear buttons. Everybody wear the same button so we know who you are, but no signs, okay? So, just so you know. All right. Julia Rains is next, followed by Dave Matthews.
Hi, I'm Julia Reese, and I'm a student at University of Oregon, also with OSBR's Protect Our Oceans Campaign. So we, as students of OSBR's Protect Our Oceans Campaign, understand that as city representatives, you have constituents to be accountable to. For that reason, we've gone into the community and gathered lots of support to reduce plastic bag use in Eugene. This ban has already been enacted in Portland, and so far here, we've gotten 1,100 signatures from community members and 50 signatures from small businesses. We're hoping to get 400 more from community members and 50 more from small businesses. So during the several times that we have gathered statements of support on campus, both Lane Community College and University of Oregon, and in our community, the general consensus has been that it's not about seeking out the occasional person who will want to sign a statement of support, but rather simply having the time and people power to ask as many people as we can. Basically, people want to support the reducing excessive use of plastic bags in Eugene. As Oregonians, we value our Pacific Ocean, and we want to protect it. And we've also got five media hits, and I have a copy of those five media hits to give you guys, and also a list of our businesses that have signed on with us so far. So thank you for taking a look at that.
All right. Dave Matthews is next, followed by Pauline Hudson.
My name is Dave Matthews. I live in Portland, Oregon. Eugene has a strong and laudable commitment to sustainability and to practical solutions that have a huge impact. Like the OSBR students, I'm working to help in our dependence on single-use plastic bags, which are simply a product that we don't need. We've lived without them for thousands of years. They became prolific in the '70s. Now Oregonians use 1.7 billion plastic bags every year. It's totally unnecessary, as was stated before, that something we use for a few minutes lasts a few hundred or even a few thousand years, when that entire time, it is at risk of poisoning or choking the wildlife that surrounds it. We, both at Environment Oregon and at OSBR, are really excited about being able to move forward with the commitment with city council on how we can deal with this problem. This is not just a problem facing Eugene, this is a problem facing the entire coast. That's why 14 communities in California, Bellingham in Washington, and just as of this morning, Seattle, have all taken action to ban plastic grocery bags. In our own state, we're seeing action in Corvallis. Portland has already done it. We're seeing action in Newport, Milwaukee, and multiple other places around the state. This isn't a novel concept, and this isn't something that's radical. It's something that's happening because citizens everywhere are recognizing organically that is something that we can do, a small, simple, practical step to help protect the environment. Sustainability is a laudable principle, and oftentimes, it gets us into messy debates with very complicated costs on both sides. This is a simple one. There is not a single plastic bag made in the state of Oregon. We can ban single-use plastic checkout bags without hurting anybody and saving a lot of ocean wildlife. Thank you.
Pauline Hudson is next, followed by Ashley Miller.
My name is Pauline Hudson, and I live at 1025 Taylor Street. This is a last resort, and it's time to be blunt. With all due respect, and I mean that, there is something wrong with the members of this board who voted yes on having MX on West 11th. Your moral compasses are all out of whack. You apparently don't have the normal human emotions such as empathy and sympathy. This is like an obsession with you. For five years, we have presented you with all the right reasons for having MX elsewhere. You know we're right, but you have hardened your hearts. How can you ignore the tragic consequences? People are desperate, feeling helpless and hopeless. Wouldn't you be? Losing your job, going out of business, homeless. I'm speculating, again, that there is a hidden agenda. The Chamber of Commerce has or had an advisory position with LTD. Why? LTD is not a commercial operation. Is this about money or planners justifying their jobs? Mayor Piercy, what happened to you? You no longer are the mayor of all Eugene. Common sense has been dismissed. Speculating again, is this some kind of payback for the failing of the web on the backs of the people? Envision Eugene knows there is not enough spare land, which is why they are planning on redevelopment. Is this some kind of payback for the failure of the web? In addition, to change, in addition, working to change the minds of those who voted no, it's shameful. If I could get down on my knees, I would, humiliate myself by begging you to really think twice about this, in spite of all the work that is going on, all that money spent. Humans come first. Please, I'm begging you again, to change your minds. There are better options. We no longer have enough representation on the council. It's a terrible feeling, helpless and hopeless, scary. And don't forget the trees. LTD wants to cut down. Eugene is a city of trees. This is another devastating blow you cannot ignore. Please change your votes to no, there are better options. Thank you for your time.
Last one up is Ashley Miller.
I'm in 2675 Nor Kenzie. I'm in Councilor Clark's district. Thank you all for letting me speak tonight and for offering us all the opportunity to speak. I am here tonight just to lend my support to a plastic bag ban as well. I am, both personally and with the organization that I work for, the Oregon League of Conservation Voters, are very interested in seeing a bag ban on the local level. I think it's a great way to begin the process. We looked at it in the legislature, and I think that starting it on the local level is the way to go. And we are working with other communities to do this, as was mentioned earlier, Newport, Portland, Corvallis. So we'll be continuing to do our work on the local level as well. And as was mentioned earlier, plastic bag pollution is one of the major parts of the pollution that we find in the oceans. So I want to point that out, that it actually does not biodegrade, it breaks into smaller pieces, and fish then eat that, thinking that it's plankton. Finally, I just want to say that it's also very expensive. Plastic bags actually cause a lot of cleanup costs for both the city and for recycling companies. So I think it would also save us a lot to actually ban them locally as well. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public forum and thank everyone for coming. Thank you all for expressing your views. That's what this is for. Want to say a special thanks to the folks who came to support the Bike and Ped Plan, and thank you for those of you who are working with We the People to say that corporations are not people, and those 5,000 signatures. And thank you for those folks from OSBR and Environment Oregon who are working on the plastic bags ban. All important community work. Thank you for being here. And now I'm going to call on Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to say thank you to everybody who came, especially the Boy Scout group that left already in the back. And if they're watching, thanks for coming. Hope it was educational. I want to see-
Well, I'll do this and go.
Yeah. I also want to say thank you to the students that are here and the folks from OSBR. I think that's an interesting idea. I'm not exactly sure where I am on that, but it's a fascinating question, and I'd be willing to talk about that. There's another, actually, another kind of side issue of something that's going on in the oceans, and I know that's of particular import to you. I don't ever hear anybody talking about this. But there's an island of stuff miles and miles across from the Japanese earthquake that's heading towards Oregon, and nobody's talking about it. In the next couple of years, it's going to be washing up on our shores. And I'm just wondering why nobody is talking about that and how to deal with it. I'm sure there'll be cultural things that some of those folks will want back, and I don't know, it's an interesting thing. So maybe the students leading an effort is the way to get the right attention on that issue and get us prepared. I don't know. Also wanted to say to Mr. Wanderer, appreciate his comments, but I wanted to clear up a question. He mentioned something about relatives of mine in a petition, and I wanted to go ahead and assure him that not everyone named Clark is related, although my grandpa got around a lot, and I don't know for a fact certain they're not relatives, but I think he's-
All is revealed.
I think he's referring to Jennifer and Jim Clark, and they have a petition online, and they're, I think they're friends of mine on Facebook, and I've met them once, but they're not related. But thanks for your comment, just to say.
Counselor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank everybody for coming out and sharing their views with us. I just have a couple of comments about, first of all, the rental housing code and the dollar amount. City manager, where is that in our calendar? I understand we got an email from Sarah Medery saying that it was going to be pushed out, but I don't know exactly when.
On November 21st, will actually be a public hearing on the ordinance. Our recommendation will be that it extends for nine months, will come back after a fuller conversation, and be back prior to October 1st. The final recommendation for an action on whether you choose to extend it at that time or not. But the public hearing would be on the 21st. Any action on that proposed expansion would be on the November 28th.
Thank you. So I'm just curious, hopefully we'll get information on how much is left in the account of that, and, you know, I've been contacted quite a bit, and it's my understanding that, you know, we are, you know, we're banking the money. And so I would rather see that either us not charge the landlords as much, or find a way to put that money back, perhaps, into the things that we point out to them that need to be fixed somehow, you know, make it equitable for them. I don't really want to react to people's comments, but I just always am challenged when comments are made about our moral compass and about our experiences. You know, all of us are elected officials, we volunteer to come up here, we ask you for your support and your votes. And it's really challenging to me because the young lady left, I think, who said about us being in touch, not knowing about homelessness. And, you know, the thing of it is, nobody really knows us, and doesn't know our experiences, knows not where we come from. And so I would just hope, you know, I try to take people at face value, and I'm here for the right reason. And I think we've done a lot of work around addressing what we can as a city legally. I think we could do more, but, you know, I'm just always a little challenged when I hear those comments around our moral values, because we're here for the right reason. Thank you.
Counselor Farr.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I wouldn't normally respond, but somebody mentioned my son, and I'm going to talk for myself and for him both. Hypocritical, I think, was the word that was used regarding my work with homelessness and my work with food and hunger issues. I think my son would join me in admonishing whomever that was who said that I was hypocritical regarding my work on homelessness and my work on food. Spent years with Food for Lane County. I founded the Council Committee on Homelessness in Youth, and for many, many years, I have worked on homelessness in this community. Anybody who says that, as Councilor Ortiz has suggested, no clue about the reality of the situation. And I would suggest that the hypocrisy lies in the person who does not do their research before they call someone a hypocrite.
Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out again on this kind of cold, drizzly night. Couple of things, the Moss Street vacation that was mentioned, public hearings on November 21st, same day as the rental housing code public hearing. That's been noticed for weeks. Actions on December 12th, easily looked up on our calendar, either hard copy or on the web. I believe the amount is, the U of O is going to pay us $1.8 million for that vacation, and still require it to be a thoroughfare. I'd like to thank all the people that were here for the Bike and Ped Plan. I think it is a very good plan, and indeed, we do need to figure out how to fund it. The folks that came out from OSBR and Environment Oregon, I intend to put in a plastic bag ordinance work session poll. The way we do business at council is you do a work session poll, if you get four votes, then you get a work session. Work sessions can turn into action, so. So I intend to do that in the very near future. And for the folks that came here for We the People, Charlie and others, I intend to work on putting a resolution together, present to council, somewhat related to yours. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, so thank you very, very much. Next is a consent calendar. Council President.
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Moved in seconded. Council Brown.
Oh, no, sorry. Pardon me.
You're consenting, okay. All right, I think we're ready to vote on that. Would you please vote? Seven in favor and one person's not here this evening, so seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes. We're going on to, now on to action item number, action item, which is the first action item, but number three on our calendar. That's an ordinance concerning dogs on Alder Street. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council is being asked to consider an ordinance lifting the ban of dogs on Alder Street. In 1996, the city council adopted a ban on dogs in the commercial areas surrounding 13th and Alder Street. Dogs owned by residents of that area are exempted from the ban. Reconsideration of the ban was requested by Councilor Taylor and a public hearing was held December 19. All input received about the ordinance was in support of maintaining the ban. At the public hearing, it was proposed that the ban on dogs be extended to the downtown core. This action tonight is not related to dogs downtown. That proposal is on the council work plan and will be scheduled for a work session in early 2012.
Council President, you want to put the motion in?
Yes. I move to approve Council Bill 5053 concerning dogs on Alder Street and repealing Section 4.427 of the Eugene Code 1971.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Council Taylor, did you want to make comments?
Yes, I do. I thought this was a ridiculous law when it was passed. It was just... Oh, sorry. I thought when the law was passed that it was ridiculous to say that, there are laws about behavior of dogs, you have to license dogs, and there are other laws that would take care of any harm or anything. There are laws that you have to pick up excrement. There are laws against biting, I think. But I think that this was, that people who are supporting this think that the absence of dogs has made their businesses better. Actually, what makes their businesses better is the presence of many students and the support of the police. I think we should punish behavior, not just existence. At the time that there was first, I wasn't on the council yet, but I came to the public hearing when this was passed in the beginning. And there were a number of professors, female professors, who spoke about how they really needed their dogs to go with them when they went to their offices at night. And it was easier to walk through that section than to go a long way around. I know when I had an office at the university, which was sometime before that, I sometimes took my dog and there was no way I could get there without going through some of these now banned places. There were also people at the time who had friends in the area who could, and they wanted to visit them at night and go home after dark, and they wanted their dogs with them to walk with them. And I think that we can punish people who are not taking care of the dogs, who have them licensed. There are many other things we could do besides saying that no dogs can walk in that area. Thank you.
Councilor Zelenka.
Yeah, I'm not going to support the motion. That area where the ban is, is in my Ward, Ward 3, near the university. It's the area right to the west of the university. And I've talked to many businesses in that area and none of them expressed to me that they thought getting rid of the ban was a good idea. Many of them mentioned that had been there a while, the environment before and the environment after were completely different. And they attributed a lot to a bunch of different factors, but one of the ones that they thought was the dogs in that area. It just was out of control and people, and that's why this ordinance, I was not on the council when we did it, but that's why this ordinance came into be. It's a very, very small area. I don't think we're punishing people that own dogs or the dogs, we're just saying in this area you can't have your dog. So you can go around that area, which isn't that much out of your way, to still get across that part of town. So I won't be supporting the motion and I encourage my councilors to support it as well.
Councilor Farr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was on the council prior to Councilor Taylor, when this was heard the first time. And there was a great deal of public testimony regarding it and I don't believe the type of testimony that we heard during that period of time has really gone away, the issues. So I'm not going to be supporting the motion.
Councilor Clark.
Thank you. I have the experience difference from some of my colleagues to have been a student at the University of Oregon just before the ban was put in place. And I remember very well the atmosphere on 13th there. And I think it has made an immeasurable improvement in the area. And that's why I brought up the idea of us at least discussing doing this downtown. I watched out of my office window recently where a guy on a bike with a pit bull on a rope was crossing the street at the same time as a mom and two kids going to karate school. The dog lunged at one of the kids and she was inconsolably freaked out and scared. And I think it's a problem. I won't be supporting this either.
Councilor Taylor, you want to say something?
Yes. If that dog was a vicious dog, I think there are other remedies besides saying no dogs can go there. I saw a man downtown with his very nice dog who said, why do they, who was just walking through, and he said, why do they want to punish me for, instead of punishing someone who does, why don't they punish the actions instead of the existence? I think we're using really bad logic. If something happens and something else follows, it does not mean that the first thing caused the second thing. Banning the dogs, if maybe business got better, it doesn't mean that it banned it. And I take issue too with considering only the views of the people who have businesses there. There are lots of other people who use those streets and the streets belong to all of us. And I also have been on that street many times before they had the ban. I used to walk through there daily. And I was also a customer of Rainbow Optics for years, until very recently. And I never had, when there were dogs there, it wasn't a problem. And I don't think, there are other things, people who misuse things, probably the people who have dogs that are nuisance don't have them licensed. And that's, and you are required to license your dog. That would be a way to take care of any problems. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Council Brown.
Thank you. I just have a question. It may be here and I may just not be saying it. How long does this ordinance last for? Is it like open ended, it just goes on into infinity, or is there a date?
It's part of the code, it doesn't matter.
It's part of the code, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Please vote. Five in opposition and two in favor, it does not pass. So we'll move on to the next item, which is an appointment to the Planning Commission. And City Council President, you want to put a name forward for that?
Yes. I moved to appoint and I misplaced the name. Now, Jaworski is the last name, was it first name?
John.
John Jaworski. Two, position five in the Planning Commission, with an expired term ending on June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Council Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope we can support Mr. Jaworski. He, in case anyone doesn't remember, came forward when we had the splitting of the Cal Young Neighborhood Association, is the gentleman who led that effort and really has been involved at a very deep level with neighborhoods and understanding what's going on, especially in the northern part of our community, but is a very, very hardworking person and I'm proud to support for that position.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Would you please vote? Seven in favor and none in opposition. Congratulations to Mr. Jaworski and thank you for serving. So now, our last item of the evening is committee reports. Is there, are there any reports from the Housing Policy Board?
A little bit. Actually, it saves me a fair amount of time because my good friend, Mr. Russo from the Regis to Guard, has provided a good summary of what's been going on with regard to the main project that the Housing Policy Board has been working on, which is the Bascom Village proposed development on, just off of Coburg Road. The Housing Policy Board met today to have a public hearing, the purpose of which was to try to develop a recommendation to forward to this body. And they have had two public hearings, a forum, written testimony and a lot of conversations. And so they have really done a pretty above and beyond the call of duty job in trying to collect together as much information to pass on to us as they could. And so today, they met to discuss some of the key elements of it. And in the course of doing that, I recommended to them that they try to bring to the council as much information as possible. And so they did decide to do their job and forward a recommendation, but they did it with the full knowledge that we will need to discuss this in a larger forum. Because there are a number of policy issues, not the least of which is the housing mix discussion with regard to Envision Eugene and all the things going on there. And this is representative of that discussion. So there are some larger issues that go beyond the purview of the Housing Policy Board, but they did make a recommendation to forward the project as it's currently being proposed, knowing full well that we will want to discuss it. And so I would encourage the members of the city council to look at the minutes, the proceedings, the testimony and the information from the Housing Policy Board as we prepare to have that larger conversation.
Thank you. Council Clark, do you have a question to ask? Council President?
Actually, I have a question to ask of the manager. I'm not sure of the process, but I guess maybe I would just encourage my colleagues when we get to that point that we consider the idea of council having a public hearing on this question as well before we make a finalized decision.
Council Farr.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a point of process, I want to congratulate and thank Councilor Pryor. I was at the Housing Policy Board meeting today and we all represent the council to various boards and commissions. And the job that you did today, Councilor Pryor, was outstanding in helping to explain to the entire Housing Policy Board, many of whom have been on the board for a long time, that what they're putting forward was a recommendation that this council will discuss in depth. Very good job today.
Okay, thank you for that. And Council Ortiz, do you have anything you want to report on El Rapa?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. So we meet monthly at El Rapa. A couple of highlights I'd like to share.
That's the Lane Regional Air Protection Agency, in case you don't know.
Thank you for clarifying that. So our director, Myron Huff, is involved at the state level on an air advisory board. So that, you know, he's representing our community at that level. There's also a committee that he's created in Oak Ridge and it's the PM 2.5 air quality. And they've done an extensive amount of work up in the Oak Ridge area with wood stove changeouts and they've actually managed to impact the local area. 700 Oak Ridge residents have received new heating systems. They've gotten 175 rebate vouchers, have been issued to homeowners in Eugene, Springfield and Cottage Grove. Total funding for the program, which is from the Department of Environmental Quality, $471,000. They were able, this was grant money that they had to write for. So I think that that, you know, really kind of is a good bang for our buck of the amount of money that we put in as a community. They also put out an advisory and want to make sure that the community knows about the no burn days when they hear it on the radio, that they definitely avoid burning if it's a day that we shouldn't be burning. They also are partnering and trying to get information on, from Oregon Toxic Alliance, I actually have a question about that. They have a new name now. What is that, Mayor? Oregon Toxic Alliance, does anybody know what their new name is? So they've changed their name, City Manager, and I don't know if they're part of our toxics board and I don't know if their position on the toxic board is mandated that they're there.
I don't think, I didn't even, I didn't know they were members.
Well, I know that, I can see her face, but I can't remember her name.
They have an advocacy position.
Lisa Arkin.
Lisa Arkin, I see, yeah. So I don't know if she's there as an advocacy position or if she's, if it's part of the code that needs that somebody from that organization participates. And so I just want to make sure that we're up to date on that, if that happens. So that's about it for El Rapa for now.
You want to talk about the Public Safety Coordinating Council?
Yes, I do. So I'm on the Public Safety Coordinating Council and I'm also on the youth component of that. And we actually met on the 21st. We had Greg Evans and John Arons from DYS do a presentation about gangs in our community, which kind of coincides with the conversation we're having. They're talking about doing a community scan to actually, because apparently there hasn't been one done. There's all this anecdotal information, but there really hasn't been anybody that's gone out and done a survey. Data hasn't gotten crunched, you know, the numbers aren't there. So they really want to work on that. They're going to go back to the PSCC and see if they can, you know, can get dollars to do that. Out of that meeting, out of the PSCC, we have now a subcommittee from the PSCC Youth Committee for gang, not gang retention.
The summit?
Gang, when you try to stop people from being in gangs.
Resention.
Intervention, thank you. And it's kind of interesting because, you know, as we talk about gangs in our community, it's all about enforcement and I really haven't heard our piece of where we're at with trying to keep kids from getting into gangs. And that's really where you get your best bang for your buck. So I'm going to be following that. They have, they're doing a scan, they're getting 100 of their cases and seeing if they're, there's this tool that Monomo County apparently has created to look at how, if there's, what the criteria was for people of color versus people not of color who are overrepresented in the judicial system. And they're going to do like a systems checks within their own caseload. So I'm really looking forward to seeing how that looks because there's obviously a lot of concern around that in the community. So I think that's it.
Thank you. How about the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have a lot to report. We did not meet last month. There are ongoing studies about the feasibility of reusing some of the wastewater rather than putting it back into the river. The idea is to use a portion of that and use it for agricultural use and in some industrial use, like sand and gravel operations. And it would be grade B water, it would not be potable, but it would be a grade up from what goes back into the river. And you'd have to lay pipelines for that. And so that study's ongoing. Kind of along these same lines, it was kind of interesting, I was in the National League of Cities convention, well, the conference last week in Phoenix, and one of the mobile workshops that I went to was the City of Peoria's wastewater treatment plant. Every bed of water that comes out of their facility is grade A, potable water. And they put it back into the aquifer. They basically found a basin in the Salt River, Ogwafreea, and they just put it back into the aquifer and they can draw it out later. Then it goes through the sands and gets, it's already clean, but if anything, it gets even cleaner that way. And they can draw it out years later. The interesting thing, all of the cities in the Phoenix area, and there's 23 of them, in very few short years will have to use a system like this if they want to increase their water withdrawal from the aquifer. The huge population increase is expected. So it's really very interesting. They have kind of like the, we have the opposite problem. We've got, we still have plenty of water up here, plenty of water we're not even using for our allocation from the Mackenzie. And I told the director after the presentation that, you know, we can't have the opposite thing. Our problem is we can put it back into the river, but it can't be too hot. We have to try to cool it down with, for the, you know, preserve the riparian habitat for the fish. And he went, oh, really? It's just two completely different worlds. That's about it. Thank you.
I wanted to just add to our comments this evening that to thank the city manager, last Friday, I had the opportunity to go to the Welcome Home Vet Build Project where our city manager, along with Terry McDonald from Saint Vinnie's and Roger Gray from E-Web and the Home Builders and other folks, took a house that I think had been out of usage, what, for a decade or something, in really bad condition with about, I don't know, how many hours, John, of...
There was an estimated 2,500 hours, 250 volunteers to that particular home.
And I opened the door to the house and I looked at, it was just so beautiful, the windows, it looked out and this young vet with his... windows, it looked out and this young vet with his beautiful children was receiving the key to the house that day. And the joy they felt at having a really good place to go was a perfectly wonderful acknowledgement of veterans day. And I just wanted to say on behalf of all of us and I think our city, thank you for your work on that and thank Roger and Terry and the home builders and everyone who was involved in it. It's a really great thing. We look forward to the next one. Thank you so much. Okay, with that, anybody else got anything for the goodie order? All right, we're done. Thank you, everybody.[1791.27][1791.27]